Gentleman who wanted to develop a studio came to the city, asked for a special use permit for a studio to get started, ended up withdrawing that, had a number of public meetings at the time, came back asking for a rezoning to mixed-use hamlet, along with five special use permits and three variances, which he was granted. In the conditions in that rezoning action, the special use permits were to expire if the property didn't close by the end of the calendar year. And the city council was given the option of reviewing it at that point, given the option in the conditions. They had the option whether in the conditions or not, but it's specifically set it up to review the rezoning at that point after, if it didn't sell by the end of the calendar year, and consider reverting the zoning back to its original or to some other zoning designation. When the property didn't sell by the end of the year, we heard from the property owner and the city council considered it and decided to go ahead and act without an application to move forward the rezoning. So there are all sorts of notice requirements and multiple meeting requirements, just like we're going through right now. But the end case is, the special use permits have expired and the proposed ordinance would revert the zoning back to RL, which is what it was before the Muscito came along, and it would also reverse the three variances that were issued. So a vote in favor of the ordinances, in favor of the status quo, anti?
Thank you. We're going to open the public hearing on this matter now. So the public hearing on this particular item is open. The reversion of the mixed-use hamlet to residential. I want to go through the rules for public hearing, and these rules will apply to both of the public hearings this evening. Each side is going to have an equal opportunity in terms of time to present their case. And by side, I mean those of favor, pros, and those against, cons. If you desire to speak in support of or against a public hearing, either of the public hearings, you should visit Ms. Witcher here and fill out one of the yellow cards, and she will tell you what you need to fill out. So those who are for the, fill out a card that are for it, will speak first, and those against will speak second. You will need to identify yourself by name, address, and if you're representing an organization, the name of the organization before beginning the presentation. In this, Dana, how many people do we have on this item?
Oh, none for this item.
Okay, so we're going to allow 10 minutes for each side on this item in case anyone does come up to speak. Following the presentations, the city clerk is going to keep time of the presentation to make sure we stay within the time limits. Please make your comments to the planning commission. Planning commission is not going to respond during the presentations. They're simply going to listen to the presentations and take them into consideration. And no action on the planning commission's part is going to be in order until the public hearing is complete. So as a start of this, is the applicant here for this one? Okay, so the applicant usually speaks first. So all those, if there's anyone that is for this present, this item that wants to speak, this is the time, and I take it we have no one?
We have none.
Same for opposed.
Correct.
So let's go ahead and close the public hearing. And is there a motion? I second the motion for purposes of discussion. Is there any discussion on this item? Let's take a vote then. All with favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Public hearing is closed on this matter. Let's go to the second item, unless there's anything else. Dana, is there anything else we need to do on that?
No.
You're saying, okay. We'll go to the second item. And the second item for a public hearing is a recommendation on an ordinance to approve a special use permit for a country inn in the RL rural district and for other related purposes. The property is located at 8735 Wilkerson Mill Road. I think on this one, we're going to open the hearing and include the presentation on this one. And Katie, you're going to be presenting on this? Okay, so let's open the public hearing. We're going to start with a summary from staff.
Okay, yes. The applicant, Justin Robinson, has applied for a special use permit for 28.7 acres at 8735 Wilkerson Mill Road. The proposal is to allow a country inn in the RL district. The proposed special use permit would include four unit cabins, so 16 in total, a 3,000-square-foot kitchen, a 7,000-square-foot dining venue, a small outdoor seating area, and a garden. Each of the 16 cabin units will be 800 square feet. In addition to hosting guests, the country inn, the applicant intends to host weddings in its indoor dining venue. The kitchen and dining venue will be accessory uses to the country inn and will be used for guests of the estate.
Thank you. As is customary here, we're going to set a time limit for each side. And at this point, how many do you have?
I think there's still seven.
Isn't it seven?
Yeah, I've got seven cards. I've got three letters, but I've also received cards for two of the folks that.
Well, I think it's appropriate. And Christine, if you agree that we set 30 minutes per side? Okay. And the first person to speak, we start with those that are in favor. And customarily, we ask the applicant to, if he or she wants to make a presentation, they're welcome to make a presentation. I understand you'd want to, and you may have a PowerPoint presentation, and we'll accept that presentation. Does Robbie have that? Or Robbie's gone. I think he had it, but. So if you would please identify yourself.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Planning Committee and neighbors. My name is Justin Robinson. I'm the owner of 8735 Wilkerson Mill Road. I am a private chef, and I have brought my civil engineer as well as project manager, Ms. Chandra and Mr. Daryl, to further expound on what Katie presented and looking forward to answering any questions or concerns that you guys may have. Thank you.
Do you want to do the PowerPoint presentation or not? I may be moved because I think Robbie is.
Mike's working on it.
Mike's getting it.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think Robbie was going to actually try to put the presentation on the board.
If you could identify yourself, please.
Daryl Johnson, JDM Consultants, Douglasville, Georgia.
And you are speaking in favor of the?
Speaking in favor. I'm working for the client here, one of his representatives, I'm the civil engineer on the project.
Yeah. Just a clarification for everyone, and this won't count against your time, but if the first person who speaks for or against decides to speak for 20 minutes, then there's only 10 minutes left for all the rest. And so it's really, you have to kind of self-regulate yourself on comments. So anyway, back to the timing, if you would. Thank you.
So I guess he's trying to pull it up now. But so what we did is, we tried to be very sensitive to the area and the nature of Chattahoochee Hills and limit the disturbance in what we're doing, just waiting on it to come up. But the development, if you're looking at the easel over here, until it comes up on the screen, we are, we're developing 16 units, country inn units, just dwellings amongst four buildings. And those buildings are broken up. You can see it on the screen here now. It's being somewhat situated towards the lower area of the site, closer to the lake. Driveway that's coming in is rather lengthy to allow for a limited amount of disturbance from the roadway. It gives a large enough throat so that if there's any cars that's coming in and there's an increased amount of vehicles coming into the site, there wouldn't be a problem there. There's two parking areas, one to the east, that you will see that's closer to the driveway and the preserved boathouse. And then you have a parking area that's near the dining hall, that's further down the roadway there. Again, we do have those 16 units situated along the lake area. Some of the comments that we've received as we've been walking through this process and talking to neighbors and things like that, we've kind of experienced concerns with being too close to the neighbors. So we provided 120-foot buffer along the perimeter to make sure that we are, we're staying as small in footprint as possible, leaving enough room so there's no noise that may get lost and kind of trespassed over into the neighbor's yard. Other things that have come up, will we be situating the septic fields? We've got that situated somewhat to the right. If you're looking at the screen board there, it's kind of right of the dining hall area, if you see that. We also have gotten comments from, our first rendering had the building somewhat more gathered together, eight-unit buildings. We've broken those up a little bit to kind of, you know, kind of get away from the noise, the grouping of noise amongst the multiple units. Just trying to think about other things that have come up where we've modified the plans to make sure that we were touching on all the points of the neighbors. In terms of stormwater, stormwater will probably be handled along the backside of those units. When that comes up, when we go through the construction plans, we'll have that further delineated. That's about it. I do want to reserve the time, just like you said. But if there's any questions afterward, you guys just let me know.
How much time do they have left?
There's 26 minutes and 8 seconds, and I do have one emailed comment in support.
Okay, would you like to read that?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Okay, well, we still have one more.
Oh, you were going to present, my apologies.
Oh, just to mention on that buffer again, we're not disturbing trees in that buffer area. Just wanted to make sure I note that.
Hi, I'm Chandra Moore. I am Director of Design for COG Studio. I've been practicing architecture for 25 years, so I'm the Director of Design for the architecture sector. I will explain, if you can bring up the PowerPoint, just some concerns that we are starting to address currently. The next slide. Sure. So on this slide, you'll see that this is a current traffic study of the future, of what, the future build of that site that you guys had. We did use this as a traffic study. Go to the next one. And you will see there is that blue dot there. That is, that's the Experience Estate location there. If you scroll down a little bit, or scroll back up, nope, scroll back up. Yeah, thank you. So if you even just looking at this study regarding traffic between 9 and 10, roughly in the left quadrant there, you're, it's about 5, 6, about 700 cars there. And the next one is on 500. So roughly, there's already traffic that is happening there, and then also in quadrant, and the other one in number 10. So the traffic study, that is there. We did look into that. Also, currently, there's 1,153 cars that go through that area today. Next slide. When we're looking at, the other thing that we're addressing is the square footage. We wanted to be, make sure everyone knew about the occupancy that if we looked at just a typical occupancy of how this works, of occupancy of scale, per occupant load. This is, we are in A2, an assembly. So with that said, it's around 15 net. So roughly, let's say 23 square feet per person. Next slide. So with that, that's 150 people at 23. We're at 3,450 square feet. So if the dining venue is 7,000, which is our largest one, we still have it at 150 people. We have a balance of 3,550 square feet for restrooms, back of house, kitchen, and event floor. So the, and which we all know, the restrooms is 1 to 45 or 1 to 70. So it's still going to eat up space. So the idea of saying that we have more than 150 people, we definitely don't. We'll probably end up with less by the time we're done with back of house and storage. Next slide. I also wanted to address the decibel levels. Currently, with OSHA and how everything works with decibels, I wanted the community to know that a concert is 120 decibels. So if a concert is 120 decibels, I don't think the idea of the units and how they're facing that river there and the back, how much noise they're going to be making. So with that, that's 120 decibels for the concert. That's 18 meters. 18 meters is roughly 60 feet. Next slide. So with that said, with 60 feet, which is, we're looking at the units there, there's 124 square feet of buffer there, 124 feet of buffer that is there. So if we're at 60 feet for a concert, we're not going to, Mr. Wilkinson and Justin, and the land will not be making that much noise for jacuzzis and things of that nature to be on that side. So I just wanted to make sure that we address that too with the idea of the square footage of the feet, of the distance. And I think that's the last slide. So with that said, our whole goal with this is to still be a good neighbor. That's our main goal. We've been able to reach out to, Justin's been able to reach out to those who are on our street, and we have some signatures, and so he's happy to share that with you. We also are basically creating nodes within Georgia. So that's pretty much been our overall goal. Our overall goal is to continue to create these nodes and these oasis that people can be able to enjoy within Georgia, not just within the idea of, this is not Atlanta. So I want to make sure everyone understands that everyone always says they're coming to Atlanta to hang out and relax, but this is Chattahoochee Hills. So the difference is that we're trying to create this oasis of zen and being that good neighbor so people can be able to come and visit and relax. So we will continue to do that. But the things that we definitely did address and we will continue to address is traffic, the noise, as you can see, we're looking at that. But I just wanted the community to understand that, the occupancy. And then we are definitely in conceptual. We are, this is a very strong master plan, as Daryl said. This is not a, we haven't even reached programming. So we are here to, we're kind of ahead of the game, which is a good thing.
Thank you, ma'am. Is that all the introductory comments? Okay. How much time do they have left?
20 minutes and 49 seconds would, oh.
Yeah, please.
Would you like me to read this?
Please.
Okay. Let me make a note of this. Time myself. This is an email received from Cara Carter and Laura Williamson. "We would like to extend our support for Justin Robinson's proposed development project, the Experience Estate. Mr. Robinson is a conscientious young man with a bold dream of creating a wonderful culinary and lodging experience. Mr. Robinson's concern for his neighbors' interests and how the project is situated on his property speaks volumes. The addition of a premier culinary experience and lodging component would be very advantageous to our community and especially to those of us in the event and wedding business. It would be invaluable to be able to send our clientele to the Experience Estate for lodging, rehearsal dinners, and to incorporate their top-shelf catering operation into our venue as well as to other Chattahoochee Hills businesses. We wholeheartedly endorse this project. Carter and Laura Williamson, Cherry Hollow Farm."
Thank you. So the time that remains, that I hear correctly, you want to reserve that to respond if, as appropriate. So we will move to the other part of this public hearing, and that is those parties that are against the proposal. And we're going to address those in order of that they were received.
First, we have Alvin Coven.
Good evening to everyone, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Alvin Coven. I am a veteran, 20-year, and also a public school teacher in three counties here. And I live at 745 Petersburg Road. I'm going to speak on what I have experienced already from the property that he is proposing to do, to develop. On Tuesday, the 24th of May, at about 8:30 PM, I heard about five shots being fired coming from his property direction. And I also heard the bullets coming through the tree where I was standing, which was about 20 or 30 feet from that. I'm lucky to be here. I could have been shot or killed. The next day, the 25th of May, I came down into the police station. And I told a policeman, I didn't get his name, because I didn't think it was too much. And my words to him was that, "I know my neighbor didn't intentionally do it. I'm sure it was a mistake." And the policeman said, "He would look into it and see about it." Five bullets, 20 feet away. I was standing in my backyard. I was fearful that I could have been shot or killed. I mentioned it to the policeman. They're mentioning distance. My property from where the bullets came through the tree is at least an eighth of a mile away. Much further. Now, we're going to talk about loud music and noise. On Saturday, August the 27th, 2022, starting at about 10 AM to 10 PM. Thumping, bass. It was so loud. I had the muffles that you put over your ears when your lawnmower have a zero turn. I put that on, and you still can, I still could hear it. It was just that loud. My neighbor, she sits on her back porch. She didn't know what to do. She said, "It was at that 10 o'clock." It went on to 10 PM that night. I called the policeman again. He said, "Well, I'm going back there." And I turned my lights on. This is what I'm experiencing now. This is no hypothetical. I stayed directly behind it. Well, on that same, on that Saturday, I said, "Let me go around there and see," because before the policeman was having property, having problems trying to identify where the address was and where it was. And on two occasions, but he found it. So then, the neighbor there, on the right there, she said, "There were about 100 cars there on that." And I found out later that Mr. Robinson, he was celebrating his birthday. My fear is, if I am experiencing that with no buildings back there, no development, my good sense tells me that if that is developed, we know what's going to happen. We know good what's going to happen. I don't think it's good intentions. That's my take on it. Some other notes here. Oh. How he identified it. He taped a plastic horse brown cover on the mailbox so that his guests could identify and find the address. I took a picture. It's on my camera.
Sir, let me make a comment here, and you can continue talking as long as you want. But how much time has been spent?
We've got 24 minutes and 50 seconds.
And so that's the amount of time that's left for the other speakers. So again, it's your choice how long you want to speak, but it does, there is a limited amount of time for those speakers who want to make comments against it. So again, don't, your choice, your choice.
That's what I've experienced. I fear that I may be shot or killed in my own backyard. That is the fear. And I am experiencing anxiety when I heard the music, and it has been on three occasions. And I am still upset just to think about it. I just wouldn't be that disrespectful. I just wouldn't be. It seems to me there, we know that there are other beautiful landscape and geography and parks in Georgia, prettier than that lake behind my house. I think it's other intentions, and that's what I feel. I'm true.
Thank you, sir. And just to remind everyone, the planning commission does not make comment or try to respond to these public hearing comments at this point. We will, after the public hearing, we'll be discussing items. So just so, it's not that we're ignoring the comments. That's just the process. So Dana, who is the next speaker?
Katrina Ford.
Good afternoon. My name is Katrina Ford. I'm at 7425 Petersburg Road. The compatibility of the proposed use with land, with land uses on surrounding properties and other properties within the same zoning district, I am having a hard time believing that a 7,000-square-foot dining hall, 3,000-square-foot kitchen, and 12,800 square-feet cabins, plus a boathouse is compatible to how the land is currently used. My property is adjacent to Mr. Robinson's property. Where these group of houses, the 7,000-square-foot dining hall, the 3,000-square-foot kitchen, the 12,800-square-foot cabins, we're, they're right in my backyard. I understand that the architect mentioned decibels. So in the recommendations, the staff recommended no more than 55 decibels. Well, in the event that 250 people, which goes to the recommended use here, 250 people, I see 250 people way more than 55 decibels. I also like to speak to Mr. Alvin's intention, his comment about intention. So just last year, Mr. Robinson and his wife mentioned that they were, they chose that property because they wanted to build a home and raise their family. Since then, they've had a beautiful baby girl. Their residence is nowhere in this site plan. So again, when we talk about intention, did you buy the property, as you stated, in front of everybody in the planning commission so that you can raise a family and raise your children there? Or did you buy the property so that you can put a 7,000-square-foot dining hall, 3,000-square-foot kitchen, 12,800 square-feet cabins? I also like to add, or I would like to make the suggestion for the planning committee, when we think about approving this permit, I know the recommendation was to use this current site plan. My suggestion is to include construction drawings. We don't know what this 7,000-square-foot dining- My suggestion is to include construction drawings. We don't know what this 7,000 square foot dining hall is going to look like, how high it's going to be. We don't know what this 3,000 square foot kitchen is going to look like or how high it's going to be. And we just have clip art of these cabins. We need construction drawings to understand exactly what is going to be placed on the property. I also like to note that the parking spaces here are only 76 parking spaces. If there is indeed a max of 250 people, there's going to need to be more parking spaces. And then lastly, I like to mention traffic. So my suggestion is for the planning committee is to look into that intersection of Wilkerson Mill and Cascade Palmetto Highway and the number of accidents. If we're adding 250 people on a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, that's going to increase the number of accidents there at the corner of Wilkerson Mill and Cascade Palmetto Highway. And then the last, okay, that may be it for me here. Just let me double check quickly. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next, we have Mary Ellen Goode. And we've, just to remind everybody, we've got 19 minutes and 51 seconds.
Okay. My name is Mary Ellen Goode. I live at 8701 Wilkerson Mill Road. My land borders the side in front of the petition's property. I'm opposed to petition for an event center and a country inn. I feel that the country inn is being headlined and the 7,000 square foot event center with roughly a 500-person dining capacity is being presented as an afterthought. The event center is going to be a major source of crowds producing noise and traffic from approximately 300 to 500 cars. That's what it says for dining is the 500 people on a regular basis. In my view, it has been misrepresented from the day of purchase. In conversation with the seller's real estate agent, it was stated that the purchaser was a young couple wanting to build a house in a beautiful setting on a lake. That would have been warmly welcomed into the neighborhood. Then once again, when I spoke directly to the petitioner at the January 17th neighborhood meeting, he stated that traffic would be minimal, no more than 25 cars. The size of the buildings was not presented or discussed at that meeting, to my knowledge. It was a shock when the 7,000 square foot event center was introduced at the February 6th council meeting. My property, as with most of us, is my largest life investment and I depend on its value to make, to take care of me as I age. Any commercial development is going to lower my property value and make it very hard to find anyone who would want to live right next door to a 7,000 square foot event center when they are buying in a country setting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is Lenora Johnson.
Katrina, my name is Lenora Johnson, 8725 Wilkerson Mill Road. I'm the little house on the little block right over there, which just some property is on this side of me and that side of me. And one side is very small. Just the things that have already been done have already impacted my life and my family. The property at 8735 Wilkerson Mill Road, which is Justin, was used for an event. The property sit in the center and the back of neighbors that live in the community of Wilkerson Mill Road and Petersburg Road. The neighbors backyard surround this property at 8735 was used for an event, which changed my life and the family. There was loud music and shooting at this event. My three-year-old great-grandson was outside because we was outside cleaning my yard in the back. And when that shooting came, he just shook and screaming. I never forget what I saw my little baby do. I never forget that. It was very hard on him. It was hard on me because I'm the great-grandmother of him, which my children and my grandchildren expect for me to protect him. And I feel like I was failed in that day because I couldn't get him to understand that was in the back of us and not right there. He thought he had been shot. He was just screaming. And he scared me because of the way he was screaming. So I had to go to him and just grab him and hold him. No one can imagine what that baby went through, which is my great-grandson. Y'all can imagine that. He's only three years old, but he can talk. He go to school. He can say his ABCs and he can count. In the event, till this day, he still come to my house, which he come all the time. He aites me, Grandma, when we in the yard, because we have to clean that yard. When we in the yard, Grandma, is they gonna hurt us? Grandma, bring the dog in. I got dogs. Bring them in so they don't get shot. That's what that three-year-old is saying to me. And it hurts me right now. Justin came to the house and told me about this event coming up. And I told him then, I could not support him because of what that happened. He let someone else use the property that had the event. And that's where the shooting started. You can't control other people. We was in the yard, so we had to holler and let them know that we are back there. They stopped, but the damage is already done, been done. The damage is already done to my baby as of today. Now it hurts. Justin Green will affect my life and my future for the dream, my dream. His dream is going to affect my dream that I already have for my children and myself. This is my home. Justin don't have a home there yet. But this is my home. And I need to protect my home and my family that deeds on the land because they know one day that's going to be theirs. What can I pass them down? His dream is going to make my property. The appraisal of my property home, property value will decrease. It'll take away from myself and the future for my children and family and all the homes that surround his property. We live here in this city. We are the ones, property value will go down. We will be getting a lot of traffic, no peace, sleepless nights and days. He want to put a country inn, commercial event, commercial dining hall, commercial kitchen, hundreds of people, cars, of course, in the center of our homes near our backyard. That's devastating to me. All the nights and all the days long. This is hard. This is hard on us because we live in there. We don't establish everything that we have and put it into the property that we are on right now. So this is hard for us. Look at us. We are a community that's already been established there. No one never thought something like this would come behind us. I wouldn't have bought that land if I'd have known this. I would have never moved here. I started working here 2005. I said, when I retire, that's where I'm gonna be. No, I wouldn't have did that. If I'd have known this, there, there's no way I would did that. Thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, next is Sharon Beener.
Dana, how much time do we have?
We have 12 minutes and 53 seconds.
How many people left?
Three. You're counting you, three left.
Three left, okay. Good evening, planning commission, Justin and his crew and my neighbors. My name is Sharon Beener. My husband and I live at 8550 Wilkerson Mill Road. We live right there at the corner of Wilkerson Mill and Cascade Palmetto Highway. We are the ones that are the recipients of all of those weekly and bi-weekly accidents, some of which almost end up in our very front yard. There are at least five major residential and mixed-use development projects that have been approved within the, a mile of the Wilkerson Mill and Peters, Petersburg corridor, not including this proposed country inn. If you take a map, which I'm sure Mike and Katie have access to, if you look at an expansive view of Wilkerson Mill Road all the way down to Cochrane Mill, come up back around Petersburg, go across Cascade Palmetto to Wilkerson Mill in South Fulton, go down Cascade Palmetto into Palmetto where Banks is building his events and all that, you will see that we are encroached with all kinds of development that's surrounding District One. District One is a very, very small district. It is not, it's, there's no way that we can handle the, we can't sustain any more development there with the little two lanes of traffic with people hot-riding down the road. I think that it's, you know, I don't mean any disrespect to anyone. I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm not even gonna name all five projects, but we have the legacy project there on Cascade Palmetto Banks. We have the extensive multi-year project across the street, across Cascade Palmetto Highway. We have the 107 lots that have already been platted on Petersburg. We have the multi-use phase project that is across from the crossroads subdivision. And then we have the mega project that's right there in the center of Chattahoochee Hills that's actually in Palmetto. All of these things have been approved. We can't do anything about those, but we can do something about this. We don't need any more of this encroachment in District One. We cannot handle it. We cannot handle the traffic, the people, and I think it makes absolutely zero sense to put a commercial business behind people's homes where people live. You all, like I said, I'm gonna try to tone it down. I'm gonna try to keep it respectful because I do want to be respectful of people's dreams. I have no problem with what Justin Robinson wants to do. I think it's a nice project. It is misplaced. It doesn't belong in people's backyards. And Sarah B., they're used to that type of foolish. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry for those of you all that live. It's not my cup of tea. You understand what I'm saying? People that live here in District One, you know, you all have made it, you know, with a lot of the, the policies and things that have passed in the last couple of years, you all have made it so that we almost can't do anything we want to do with our property. But you let people come in that want to develop and you govern by all of these variances. You, you'll find a way to let them do what they want to do.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, I'm gonna ask everyone to please be respectful here and please tone it down to a degree if you can, please.
Like I said, this, any more development in District One is going to further devastate us. We're overwhelmed. And the development, the building hasn't even started yet. But like I said, I live there on the corner. My husband and I walk the community. We get, almost get hit just about every time we walk, man. You know, so I'm just saying, we ask that you all will have, that you will consider the value of how the residents feel there. Put yourself in our position. Think about the, the broad scope of everything that's already been approved. How am I doing on time?
About nine minutes and two seconds.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna be finished. But as a resident in District One, I expect for this committee and the city council to value and protect the interests of residents and the integrity of the charter by which this city was founded. I'm not opposed to growth, but I want, I want the committees, planning committee, the city council, to exercise good judgment and to consider the people that live here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next is Gloria Edwards. Okay. Okay. Shranja, Shranja Hill Smith.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. I am Shranja Hill Smith, president of 7449 Petersburg Road, Fairburn, Georgia. And I am coming in opposition of the special use permit for this purpose. So I want to say we all have rights and as property owners, we have to be mindful that we have a right to the safety and use and peace within our property and that our rights end at our neighbor's boundary. And we, we must be good neighbors. And so I wanted to, to piggyback on what others said. So my concern, similar to other residents, is that there has been no investment. This is my 20th year in my home. I purchased my home at age 27. I was scared to death, but I know the area. I grew up in Palmetto. I rode these streets. This is where I learned to drive. And so I knew that I was among good company. I grew up with people's kids here and I know where I am. And my soul, I felt like that was, that was for me to do at 27. I invested what I had accumulated for today. Today, I retire in three months with a dream to be in my home and to be in my community and to further develop, but not to compete for peace, to sleep at night due to loud music that breaks through. Our air is clear and you can hear everything. And it, it is so disruptive when the music is loud and when there is gunfire. It's, it's like it's in your home and it's invasive. And I have called the police and they have not been of the most assistance, but that's another matter. I want to concur that our roads are two-lane roads and they're not even developed. They're not developed or paved at a depth that high traffic is, they're not designed for that. And yes, we struggle with Highway 154. The traffic there, if I come home early, I teach. And if I come home before four o'clock, I'm amazed at how long it takes me to get to my house. I should be able to zip right in, but we have a lot of traffic. And I don't know if the, the communities, I thought when we first started talking about the conception of building our city, we had community meetings and we met with ARC about the whole regional development so that we didn't overstep boundaries and approve so much here or there that we wound up inconveniencing one another. But it seems like we're not talking or we're not considering the scope of everything that's coming here. It's a beautiful place. It is a wonderful place. I get it. I know why everybody wants to be here. We just can't have everybody here. That's just the bottom line. I do have similar concerns to my neighbors, but I wanted to say that to live in this community, we have a covenant with one another to be good neighbors. And 1 Corinthians 6 to 12 says, "All things are lawful unto me, but all things are not expedient." We have to do, we have the right to do anything we want, but should we? Is it going to be in the best interest of the community? Is it in the best interest of my neighbor? Am I being considerate? Cities that make the top 10 best lists have something in common and that is high fidelity in planning and zoning. You're doing something I can't do. And so the charge is on this body to do right by this whole community so that we can have a future. I've looked forward to this because that home, I want Josiah to have something. If he needs, my mom swears he's not coming back this way, but I don't care. I want him to be able, if he just sells it, he has something to start his dreams with. I love Justin Robinson. I'm so excited for him. I am. The accomplishments that he has achieved, I applaud him. I do. It's just the place. It's just the place. And that's it. That's all we're saying. We just thank you for your service. I can't even imagine. I know it's hard. But I thank you for taking on this committee and for hearing us today. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Got three minutes and 49 seconds left and Gloria Edwards.
Are there, how many more comments?
So what I'm gonna do is just be. I'm, I'm sorry. Gloria Edwards, 7415 Palmetto Cascade Highway. I have a two-acre lot, then back of my lot butts into Petersburg Road. And so because everyone has my letter on file, I'm just going to say this, that we have, I'm opposed. We have experience for the last three years at a minimum of just a cabin there. Can you imagine in the back of our yards? All these people? No stipulation can convince me or my neighbors that I have here signed several, more than several to want this. We, we don't have anything against Justin. I don't know Justin, but we know what has happened back there, even before we could put a face to it.
We, we don't have anything against Justin. I don't know Justin, but we know what has happened back there, even before we could put a face to it. That the roads at the crest of Wickersham Mill Road and Palmetto Cascade. The, 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 uh, and I'm having a little traffic study done. It just didn't make it here. But from the, the traffic, GPS will probably send them down seventy, which is South Fulton Parkway to Palmetto Cascade to right on Wickersham Mill Road. Or it will take them to Rivertown, uh, South Fulton Parkway to Rivertown Road, then down Petersburg Road. Small area, okay, that ends into Wickersham Mill, then left onto Wickersham Mill. The traffic is not gonna support it. It's coming through our house and you cannot say the number of people. You got two hundred people. That may be two hundred cars, but you got the equipment for the, for bands. Have, I, I sing in a band. I can't imagine saying that you can base this on a study for Georgia. This study has to be for us. And we really were not concerned, but I did the traffic because as they said, we have an accident at South Fulton Parkway, Rivertown Road, uh, Palmetto Cascade and Wickersham Mill. Weekly, if not bi-weekly. The tractors and trailers come from, uh, Fulton Industrial all the way here. We got the traffic from Carrollton. It doesn't make sense that this would even be considered. But if it, it is considered, I'm asking that you all would deny this based on us. And as I say, you have my, you have our petition and, um, and you have my letter. So I thank you for your time and, um, everybody, please consider us.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, how much time?
There's one minute left. There is a letter that, um, I had three letters submitted. Two of the folks spoke tonight. Um, they've been provided to the planning commission members, so I can read as much as I can of this one letter if you would like.
Well, it's been submitted and it's only a minute and they're relatively long letters, so.
Correct.
I, I, I would suggest not.
Okay.
Christine, is that? Yeah, and I have too. Um, so I think at this point, uh, we have some reserve time. How much reserve time is there?
Nineteen.
Will you keep track of it? Does the applicant, uh, or his representative, do they, you want to respond to any of this?
Give me just a second to set my timer, get it back to that. Um, it's nineteen minutes and forty-seven seconds. You can go.
Oh, man. Um, some compelling arguments for sure. Um, but I wanna speak to a couple. I was, um, I was at a Cobb County Special Land Use Meeting two days ago. And, um, they had somebody present something to the board that nobody liked. Nobody wanted it. But the board sort of just, they looked at it and they said, you know what? This could be a good fit. We'll give you some interim twelve-month uh, look at this, this business and how it works out. And if it doesn't, then after twelve months, you shut it down and it's all done. So I'm, I'm, I'm just throwing that out that that is an option. Other counties do it. Uh, cities do it. Cobb County is a reputable county, so I'm just throwing it out first. Commercial kitchen, I wanna speak on that. Um, I think the term commercial kitchen gets a little, uh, it gets tossed around and it's really not, um, in a sense, commercial like Walmart or commercial like the nearest Kroger. A commercial kitchen is where he's, he has enough room to, to feed enough people and he needs, he needs this large kitchen to do so. It's not your residential kitchen. So a commercial kitchen would, would give him that capacity to do so. Um, so I, I don't want the commercial word to get thrown around too much. Um, I can't speak too much about shootings and stuff like that because that is a, a property that's unmanned at this time. Right? Anybody could go out and fish on the lake and trespass and do stuff. I don't know what happened at that time. And I apologize to anyone that could have been frightened by the shots. Um, I'm sure my, my client can, can speak to that a little bit more. But it's unfortunate for sure, but this development will be more controlled, right? It, if, you know, we have a hundred and twenty-foot buffer, but if we needed to fence the entire buffer with a certain size height fence, privacy fence, we could do that to, to provide more security. We could provide security officers also to make sure it's more controlled. One of the things that Justin mentioned to me, and I just wanna make sure that I'm speaking to everyone's concerns here because I know it is, it's a frightening thing to see new development, but it happens. It happens in every city it comes. And just like Ms. Sherabina, she mentioned about the developments, the five developments that's coming to the city, it's gonna continue to happen. Um, people like Chattahoochee Hill is a very nice area. And so, um, in terms of the perimeter fencing, we could provide that. It could be of a certain height, six foot, eight foot, whatever that takes to, to make people feel a little bit better about the development. We can provide security, um, traffic studies. We're more than willing to put together a traffic study, but what we gotta, we gotta understand about traffic studies is traffic studies look at what's happening at our development. Every development is going to increase traffic into some, some capacity, but it's about the level of service for the roadway. If we provide some type of turn-in for the development, then we really, then the capacity of the roadway is still operating at a level of service that's okay. Um, typically the level of service when Ms. Gloria, is that right? Ms. Gloria Edwards. So when your traffic study comes back, they're gonna look at the level of service for the roadway. And so that roadway is what they're gonna determine is being impacted. And if it stays the same, everything is gonna be just fine. This development, we anticipate about a hundred cars. Two hundred people doesn't, isn't equivalent to two hundred cars. So most people, they carpool and stuff like that, so, uh, we don't, we don't anticipate two hundred cars. When we're doing, when we're doing developments and we're doing designs for these developments at the largest grocery store, Publix or whatever, they tell us to size it as if we are sizing for the square footage of a building. Some hotels is two people to one car. It's in the rubric inside the city's code. They tell us how to size this. So we have enough parking to satisfy what we're trying to do. We don't anticipate three hundred cars, two hundred cars. It won't be that much traffic coming to this development. So I just wanna make sure that that, that's a misnomer. I wanna make sure I get that understood. Um, couple of other things here. Hours of operation, um, Justin just mentioned to me that weekdays it would be like a six to ten and this is for events. Right? So we know that we probably wouldn't have an event every day, but six to ten during the weekdays, Saturdays, typically, 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 Saturdays and Sundays, maybe from twelve to six. And he will probably offer up his services to some private, um, dining experiences to people who wants to come by during the week. How much time?
Fourteen minutes, twenty seconds.
Okay, I wanna keep going here. Um, man, it was a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff. Invalid, valid, valid things, cuz I know people wanna protect their homes. The, uh, Ms. Katrina Ford mentioned about construction plans and heights of buildings. Um, so it is, it's premature. It's somewhat premature for most developments to put together a full set of construction plans for a project if it's in this stage of limbo, right? Because there's a lot of money that goes into those construction plans. And if he doesn't use them, he just paid out a lot of money for it and he doesn't need it. So you do, you do a lot of preliminary analysis first. You put that together, you create something conceptually. And you, you try to present your concept to the body. And then it, I mean, Mike agrees, I'm sure. And then you, you go through the permit process and you get all these construction plans approved. In terms of heights of buildings, they're set by the city. So this commercial kitchen or dining hall, it, it has a max height of thirty-five feet or thirty foot. So if you think about a building, the max height is that, it can't surpass that. So, um, those are typical things that's in the ordinance. Um, I'm gonna pass it over to Shandra. I'm sure she has some stuff to say. Um, I just wanna make sure that traffic, traffic is not one of the things that, I'm not gonna say traffic can't impact this roadway. I am saying that a traffic study can be, you know, we can get one, we can have one for the development, but I'm telling you that the traffic study is gonna focus on our development. Not on the intersection. It's gonna look at the traffic that occurs there, but it's only gonna make sure that it focuses on what we're gonna be increasing into our development. And if that level of service is maintained, we should be just fine. So if, and, and you look at our plan again, that throat, which is the driveway that goes down into the development, it provides extra capacity along that roadway to get into the development. So when somebody makes that left or right into the development, it, they don't get, they don't get stagnant along the street. Right? So they're not holding up traffic in the street area. So, um, I don't think that there's gonna be an increase. We can get a traffic study, very much so. Um, but just wanted to bring some, some info to you guys.
Thank you.
Well, I thank everybody for their comments for sure, and I understand their concerns. You know, doing this field for so long, change is hard. It's the, it's hard, it's inevitable. But we all know that in order to see the change, we must be the change that we wanna see. And where Chattahoochee is going and where, it's better now that we have this opportunity to, like Darryl was saying, we're not at the phase, like Katrina was saying, that we needed drawings. We are at the very, very beginning. In this field, there's five phases. We are at phase one of five. So we are not even in programming yet. But what we've done, which I find so amazing with Justin, is he's brought this to everyone's attention before even doing construction drawings, which normally isn't, isn't done. Um, if we could go back to the PowerPoint there for me. The jobs that this will also create is pretty amazing as well. I do understand what Ms. Ruby's daughter was saying regarding her son. I do understand that I have three children as well. I do understand that you wanna be able to leave them something amazing and it's better, we don't know what they will change it into. And so it's nice to be able to be at this area, to be able to say, this is what we are. We're not putting up a large commercial spaces with retail and restaurant. This is still a zen oasis that is still being created. And when you're looking at, it's just like what, what's happening out in Blue Ridge. It's no different. It's not gonna be as, it's not going to be loud. We've pushed it all the way back as well. The gentleman before, Alvin, I'm sorry that there were shootings. I wasn't here at that time. Um, but as Darryl was saying, many people can control what, cannot control what's happening on their property now. So if we, if there's just a house there, there's nothing to say that someone can't go out and do the shootings then. Justin, do you own a gun? Okay. And so with that, we also understand that, have you ever gone out to do any shootings or at that area?
I'm, I'm gonna ask you to address your comments to the.
Yes, I was just asking that. So with that said, many people will be able, many people in this area do shootings of guns, whether it's a holiday, whether, I mean, I'm in Johns Creek and we are hearing shootings all the time. But it doesn't stop development. If you go to the, go up one slide for me there with the decibels. So we're talking about a concert. So I get the idea of the noise from the back that Ms. Lenore Johnson was saying how loud it was there. With this being pushed back, we're talking about a concert is a hundred and twenty decibels. I know many people here have been to a concert and it's very, very, very loud. Justin will not be doing a concert out in the open. These will be a controlled environment in a building with um, insulation and it will be enclosed, so it's not outside there. Um, and I do apologize once again how Ms. Lenore was saying. That is frightening for a three-year-old. Um, but like I said, this will be in a more controlled space. I wanna make sure that I've addressed the concerns that I've seen. Yes, um, Mrs. Ford had said that this is twelve thousand square feet of cabin. That's not accurate. It's eight hundred square feet for nine of them. So that's very large, the twelve thousand. As far as the people, it was said that there was two hundred and fifty people. We're at a hundred and fifty max. Um, and that hundred and fifty, we have probably two hundred here in this statement. But when we're looking at the square footage of what is happening, thank you right there. Thank you. If we're looking at the height of this seven thousand square feet, could we fit two hundred? Sure. But that doesn't mean we're going to. Because we still have to follow code, which is a hundred and fifty. And I've created a little bit of buffer there. That's three thousand square feet. And so therefore we only have three thousand square feet left for restrooms. A kitchen that, um, Justin will do with his team and a whole dance floor. So there's not enough space for that. Um, I will leave the remaining marks for Justin. I do not have any thing else besides, I know change is hard in any city and, um, beyond grateful that we are able to present to you guys before we even start drawings. It's, it's definitely an honor and grateful for it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, five minutes and forty-one seconds.
Five minutes. I appreciate, uh, to all my neighbors that came up to, uh, voice their concerns. Some that I've heard when I personally reached out to them, uh, visited their, uh, home as well, uh, when I did have some free time. And, uh, some things I wanna point out, um, over my course of owning this property for the last, you know, we'll say three years. Um, going from beginning to end of people who spoke up here, one thing that I always do and I will continue to do that I've done also with my neighbors is speak to the facts, speak to being honest and transparent and everything. There's not a question that someone can ask me that will not give you the hundred percent honest truth. So to Mr. Alvin, um, you know, if we neglect the hour and a half conversation that we had when, um, I was backing out one of the neighbor's driveways and saw you sweeping up your driveway. Um, everything that you spoke to in your story, which you have every right to feel the way you feel. Um, you know, I've, I've, I've talked to you about that and I told you it wasn't me. So whether you want to believe that or not is truly up to you and I don't wanna spend any of my five minutes continuing on that. Um, there are some neighbors and community members that are in the room that have been on my property at the time that there was also gunshots, um, and it's not my property. Although for everyone on Petersburg and further, it's easy to try to pinpoint the sound of a gun. And a lot of us have, um, good sense to kind of find the direction. But although it may sometimes seem like you can pinpoint it on my property with also having witnesses here that is not coming from my property. And to Ms. Lenore, um, with the gunshots that she said happened on my property when I wasn't there, she's a hundred percent correct. And that person that was using my property was our neighbor, Mario, which is the white house right next to her that, um, that my driveway runs in between. And the conversation I had with him was, hey, if you ask our neighbor, if she's okay with you having your birthday party on my property, I have no issue. He said that he asked the neighbor and the neighbor said yes. As I followed up the conversation with Ms. with Ms. Lenora, she voiced her concerns of what happened. And I said, well, I told them to ask you. And the confusion or miscommunication, if you will, happened because our neighbor asked what he thought was the neighbor, which was possibly her brother. And he gave the go-ahead, but it wasn't Ms. Lenore. And that's where the miscommunication can come. But that, I'll take fault for that because I didn't further examine to make sure that it was Ms. Lenore who this. because I didn't further examine to make sure that it was Ms. Lenore who this particular person spoke to. But the difference is, is this is with undeveloped land. The only thing that's back there is a trailer home. And with me having a control abiding by code and city regulations, I can ensure my neighbors that again, the respect that y'all deserve will be given on my property. The primary focus is for me to expand my dining career as a chef. I'm a very talented chef and everything that I do is for that purpose. Since we've had last year when I was here and there was the suggestion to say no, I went back to the drawing board. I kept grinding. I kept being the rock star that I am. And I landed a beautiful position with my alma mater to be an adjunct professor in the culinary program. That culinary program also houses a hospitality school at Auburn University. So it behoove me to not think in a bigger mindset that I can expand from being a private chef and caterer to scaling to a hospitality group where not only I can cater to my guests when they stay at these country in rooms, but also provide the breakfast, the lunch, the dinner, these private dining experiences that I've been having. To the noise and the decibels, we have addressed that. To Ms. Mary who um, who stated her concerns, which is very valid. Um, I asked that you return my two phone calls uh, when I reached out, just that we can come person to person, neighbor to neighbor, so I can address your concerns. Um, and make sure that your um, your concerns are well taken care of. Um, Ms. Ms. Um, Shandra, Shronda, I appreciate all your um, your comments and everything that you said um, makes a hundred percent sense. Um, but there's also a thing that I want people to understand is although on scale, it may seem like a lot, I'm only utilizing 10% of my 28.7 acres. 10%, I'm actually, and it's very accurate, is what I'm putting on my property. And that's a fact, okay? So when you think of a large-scale property, a large-scale development, this isn't it. Everyone has their right to do what they want to do on their own property and I'm, I'm a firm believer in that. But I tried my hardest to position each building in each roadway that benefits not only what my dream is, but also to Ms. Lenora's point, her. She says she wants peace and quiet and she moved out here for a medical reason to ease that. And it is very unfortunate that some of the instances that has countered that has happened on my property from the neighbor and the other instance was um, a private dining uh, event that I had. It was seven people and it was outside, right on our property line, right? Um, but those are the things that can be controlled in an enclosed environment. Um, and that's just the things that I want to bring uh, to the discussion. Uh, Ms. Dan, how many? Hey, right on time. So uh, I just want to conclude by saying, I invite everybody, uh, neighbors and all, if you have any questions or any specific concerns to yourself, please feel free to stick around and talk to us um, and the engineering team. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, before we close the uh, public hearing, uh, Ms. McKee, I would like to ask you to read the proposed conditions.
Okay.
If you would. Now, these are the conditions that staff is recommending. Um, that is in the packet. That's been posted online and there are several of them, but I think it would be informative to, and these would be the conditions that you are proposing uh, along with your uh, recommendation to approve, correct? From staff?
Yes.
So uh, if that's all right, I would like to go ahead and have you read those.
There are sixteen of them, so brace yourselves. Okay.
Uh, and, and by the way, uh, a number of these, as I read them, are intended to be responsive to certain concerns.
Absolutely. Okay, number one, the site plan submitted with the application will serve as a site plan for the development. Any departure from this design will require council approval.
And, and just to amplify, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but it used to say site plan will be concept plan. But the concept plan is not being approved right now. So they're going to have to go back and do a concept plan.
The intent with this language was actually just to, to make this a, a little bit tighter than a concept plan. Concept plans allow quite a little bit of wiggle room and so this would be um-
The site plan, but it's not pre-approving, pre-approving the concept plan. Anyway, go ahead.
Okay.
I think it says what it says.
Okay. Uh, number two, events accessory, uh, events are accessory to the country inn shall be limited to private dining experiences and wedding celebrations. The venue will not serve as a restaurant for the general public, but for overnight guests of the estate. Number three, the permitted capacity of the dining venue will be limited to maximum of 250 guests for wedding celebrations and 50 guests for dining experiences. Any event to exceed this limit will require, will require a special event permit from the city. Uh, number four, there shall be no outside catering. The applicant shall directly supervise all weddings and dining experiences. Number five, parking surfaces shall be made from previous materials, i.e. gravel, brick, papers, except for the areas dedicated to handicap parking. Six, wedding events shall not start before 9:00 AM and/or end after 10:00 PM. Wedding shall be limited to Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Seven, the 120-foot buffer, a buffer surrounding the property shall be undisturbed other than natural surface walking trails. No portion of the trail shall be closer than 50 feet of, of the property lines unless the owner of the adjoining property grants express written permission. Number eight, all trail boundaries shall be adequately marked to prohibit guests from entering neighboring properties. Number nine, the special use permit will expire with the sale or transfer of the property. Ten, there shall be no music or amplified sound to exceed 55 decibels beyond the interior side of the 120-foot buffer. There shall be no recreational gunfire on the property. Eleven, no event activity shall be visible above the tree line. This includes a prohibition on fireworks, releasing paper lanterns, and other activities that could be a nuisance or danger to neighbors. Twelve, the driveway shall be relocated to the furniture that lies to the east of 8725 Wilkerson Mill Road, located equidistant from the side property lines. Any tree removal for the driveway shall be kept to a minimum. A vegetated buffer of 50 feet shall be maintained along the first 400 linear feet of the driveway. The existing driveway to the west shall be uh, blocked by a gate, bollard, or vegetation and may be accessible only, uh, only to emergency vehicles. Then we have thirteen. Uh, solid waste storage containers receiving garbage shall be placed on solid or concrete platforms or pads located and constructed to minimize spillage and facilitate cleanup. Such containers shall be fully enclosed by a wall or an opaque fence and located within 10 feet of the kitchen. Truck access to these containers will need to be considered when selecting a location for the containers. Said container shall be emptied at a minimum once a week by a contracted solid waste company. Fourteen, the signage for the country inn shall meet the requirements set forth in the city sign ordinance, shall not exceed 32 square feet in size or exceed six feet in height. Fifteen, the applicant shall provide one to two small private property or similar signs to be used at 8725 Wilkerson Mill Road to discourage guests from entering the wrong property. And sixteen, an adequate grease trap shall be installed on the property. Said grease trap must meet the requirements set forth by the Georgia Department of Public Health. The applicant must regularly maintain a grease trap.
Uh, thank you. Um, we probably will come back to some of those in the discussion. I'm going to close the public hearing. At this time, the public hearing is closed. We will now go into discussion where the planning commission will ask questions, uh, direct questions of staff of the applicant, uh, and otherwise as needed. Um, so that's the, that's what we're doing. This is not a, an all, all-hands discussion, but we're going to try to respond uh, and try to consider the public comments in, in our discussion. So um, as an initial matter, uh, do, do you have, uh, or would you like me to go ahead and start?
I'll, actually, I'll start. Can, can you hear? Okay. Um, I would like to say that Rodney in the past has been so eloquent of speaking to the community as a resident of Chat Hills. Um, so he is missed. I will do my best. Um, I own about the same amount of land as Justin does. I um, have dreams. I am an entrepreneur as well. I also understand your concerns. Um, the gunfire freaks me out and it's something that I deal with off of Rico every single weekend. Um, we have um, semi-automatic going off quite frequently. Um, it scares my pets, my livestock, my soul. Um, but it's also a right and, and that's something that I struggle with daily as a, as a resident in Chat Hills. And I feel you. I feel all your, your heart on, on that one. Um, so I hear you all and I appreciate your comments. And I'm going to let Doug start the official question.
Oh, that was pretty official. Um, I, 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 I have a, I have a question for staff. Are concerts allowed under this special use permit?
No, not with the conditions.
Right. Um, and so whether they're on the exterior or interior, they're not allowed. So my question to the applicant, are you planning concerts? Well, let's stick on the concerts because you also mentioned that you're entering the, you're not even to the pre-programming or programming phase. And so we get a little con-concerned because what are the allowed uses now under this special use permit?
In addition to the lodging?
Yeah.
Uh, so the, yeah, the, the lodging, weddings, and private dining.
Right. Uh, that's it, right?
Sorry, I'll be careful. Wedding events, it doesn't matter if the ceremony or the-
It's the wedding event.
Yes.
Right, right.
So you can have a band as a-
There could be, right. There could be with the dance floor interior inside. Right, right, not, right. That's right, that's right. And so, right, so if it happens to be rehearsal dinner, happens to be a wedding reception, happens to be the wedding itself, any of those would qualify as the wedding event.
I don't consider that a concert. And you guys don't either, so no concerts. All right. Um, there were, um, the number of people that are allowed, uh, that are contemplated. We have 250, but I think I heard 150.
Yes, so if the 250, that's where we started. At the, we went in with the-
And we started, yes, that was our number for 250 as we're looking at square footage in, in a more tighter form as we could prepare for programming. It will be 150.
Well, I think we need to make that change.
All right, I have a note that's-
All right, thank you, thank you.
Um, so that will, it will state that it will be limited to a maximum of 150 and if more than that, you will require a permit.
A special, a special event.
By the council, by the city council.
Uh, so-
Special event.
Is it administrated?
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah, add a little bit of clarity on the special events. You asked about concerts. Um, any property in the city can apply for a special event from, permit from the city. Um, um, so when you ask about concerts, that, that was our answer, saying no concerts allowed is not, it is um, refers to what's being permitted in this permit. Um, if somebody, any property owner wanted to have a concert, got that approved by the city under a special event permit. There are limited numbers allowed per year. It's hundreds of dollars to get one. Um, but conceivably something could be allowed. We're not trying to disallow anything that could be done under a special event permit. We're talking about what can be done under the permit he's applying for right now.
Well, if I'm hearing correctly, you're not planning to do any concerts, right? So I think that's a fair condition in here.
That's, that's right. That's right. I just wanted to be clear, it, it's not setting um, separating him from any other property in the city in that way.
Let's be clear. One of the, one of the conditions is no concerts.
No concerts, yes.
Okay, and that's-
So we need to, we need to make some changes in the language if that's the case.
That's correct, that's correct. So that's where we're aiming it.
Right, right, so-
If we could have, if we could have quiet, we'd appreciate it, please.
So the language as written says what can be done under this permit. If they were to receive another permit from the city, a special event permit, they can do other things.
But I think the applicant is saying he's not planning to do that, so I think we need to change the language to make that clear that-
Okay, right, I agree.
Excuse me, you want to talk?
If that's the intent, if that's the intent, we do.
Yeah, just, just to clarify, um, there's no concerts. And when it comes to the 250 to 150 uh, discrepancy, the 250 was the max allowed, but based on the square footage.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. That's just what I want to clarify.
Understood.
Yes, sir.
So I think the applicant is, is okay with that and I think we should make those, make those changes.
Add a condition for that.
You've seen, okay, fine. Um, I, I now have a question or two for, for staff on this. If you go ahead and please take your time. Because I think it's important.
Okay.
Um, a year, almost a year ago, we had the first uh, application for this and it was for a, an, an event venue large, right? Um, it, it's now from an advanced event center large, it's now changed to a country inn with accessory uses. What was the thinking about that change? Why was that, why, why, why was that done?
This is a question for the applicant.
Well, actually, is it, or you agree to it though, right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Why change the country inn from an event center large?
Yes, sir. That was what I stated since the previous event center proposal. Um, me going back to my alma mater and furthering my credentials as a culinary educator and being um, kind of in the past within the hospitality sector that the school provides, I think there is a mutual benefit for me to house that on my property with still less land disturbance. Now, my plan is to have um, internships from the culinary students to come over, to come over so that they can also get hospitality experience. So it's kind of me scaling from a private chef and caterer to now a full hospitality group.
Um, I, I think I understand what you're saying, but that's fine. And, and you have characterized this as a, as a, um, and I think it's your characterization of a country inn with accessory uses.
Yes.
All right, and the accessory uses are the kitchen and, it's all right, you don't, you don't, you can, are the kitchen-
The kitchen and the private dining venue.
Um, and, and I think you've made a determination then that those are normally pertinent to this.
That, that's right, that's right. Uh, not frequently this specialized, but having um, dining space and event space within a country inn. For example, the Serenbein is a country inn. They host events. They have a regular service restaurant. This is limited, so they can't have a regular service restaurant. Um, but yes, those are, those kind of uses are-
Uh, there, there is a provision in the uh, in the code that says that the, this kind of, this country inn can have accessory uses, but they have to be normally pertinent to a country inn. Now, we have two other country inns permitted, one exists.
Just the Serenbein and then we have one that's permitted El Barroso, but that one is, has not uh, come to fruition just yet.
But it, as I understand it, it's permitted, it did have similar sort of a pertinent uses, right? Not precisely what he's doing, but it's similar.
Correct.
Okay, fine. The, the second thing is, is that I just want to make sure we're on the same page with this and that is that um, that under the accessory uses, the uh, no accessory structure can be constructed until construction of the principal structure has commenced. And what that means is the cabins, I'm calling them cabins, you may use different term, they have to commence construction first.
He, he would have to be operating six, a minimum of six lodging units to be a country inn and he can't do the accessory stuff without operating as a country inn. So he would have to have at least six operating room, oh, operating room, have to have six, he would have to be running six lodging rooms um, uh, for lodging purposes before or at the same time. Um, he can't start out with um, uh, event-related things or culinary-related things and then add those cabins for units later.
You understand that, correct? All right, you, in other words, you can't start with a culinary kitchen and so on, uh, under the code. Um, the um, the timing that I think you put in your application, and this was in the, the narrative that you provided um, as part of the application materials. Um, this was the experience app, uh, it was this narrative provision, right? And, and I, I think what I'm reading here is that your planned construction time is that you have, uh, you're going to start conceptual development in April, if this gets approved right away. And you're anticipating 18 months for that conceptual development, is that correct?
Well, the construction said to be built, I mean, I think about six to eight months. Um, and going through the permitting process, I think the 18 months is for construction and stuff to take place.
Well, that's, that's why I was asking a question because there, there, what it says is that to start the, you're going to start in April and the project will take 18 months of dedicated architecture, structural, landscape, and civil documents.
Yes.
Now, I thought you were talking about conceptual development then, but it, but then it goes on to say it's going to take two to three years of construction.
So, so eight, in 18 months, I would think, uh, in Chattahoochee Hills, it doesn't take that long to get things permitted. Um, we do go through the process, right? As soon as we get through this approval, hopefully. Um, then we'll go through the construction plan process. I think that may take about six months to build the set and to submit and get review comments and get approvals. And then we pull permits from there, start land development. At that point, I think by next year, something should be wrecked out of the ground sometime next year. So in that 18-month time span.
Well, that, that clarifies it. So you think it'll be uh, land development, construction in a year?
We have the GC here too, Patrick. He can speak on that in terms of the construction piece and how long that, that could take. I know that on the design side and the permitting, about six to eight months.
Um, thank you very much. Uh, what, what is the restriction on when they have to? Um, thank you very much, uh, what, what is the restriction on when they have to before the special use permit expires?
Um, right, according to the code, um, uh, section on, um, special purpose, all special permits, including special use permits and special administrative permits, um, the, uh, the, uh, sorry, letter D, expiration of special permit, um, unless a building permit or other required permits are secured within twenty-four months of issuance of special permits, uh, and construction subsequently undertaken and actively continued pursuant to such a building permit. Uh, the special permit shall expire automatically unless the permit is extended by a resolution of the city council. So they have twenty-four months to, um, to get permits and then they have to keep, keep working at that point.
You understand that?
Yeah.
Okay, um, I, I have a, a, a number of the comments. Um, were focused on operational concerns. And, and a number were focused on traffic, uh, concerns as well. Um, and, and I was interested in, um, some of these suggestions you made uh, regarding other conditions that would be acceptable. Um, o- o- one of those was to do a traffic study. Now, you would put up a slide about a traffic sunny, I, I'm sorry, I, the, not, not. Chandra, I apologize, I'm Chandra, um, what was that traffic study?
That was from the previous site, but it wasn't from that.
The one on, uh, Bear Park on Wilkersonville Road.
What's that?
Let's take it from Merrill.
The Palm Arrow? The, the one, yeah.
Yes. How, um, how far away is Merrill Park and Bear Creek from this property?
Mile, a mile and a half, maybe.
And it showed, and it showed on the, on that slide there, there was a blue dot where we are. And so it was focusing on nine and ten.
The size of this development is not one, I think, under the code that the code requires a traffic study.
That's correct.
But there are so much community concern about that, I think it is a very interesting suggestion and offer about doing, uh, an actual site-specific traffic study. Uh, that, I, I, I think that that may be something that would be important to see and, uh, whether it's a condition or whether it um, is done first, um, I think that's very important. Um, the, the fencing proposal, would you explain what you were thinking there, please?
So I, I just know on some properties you have, um, privacy fence, the wood privacy fence along the perimeter of the property. We already have a hundred and twenty foot buffer, so in order to isolate us even more, um, I think that we could offer up some privacy fencing um, to keep us in the noise, serves more of a barrier, um, with the trees, of course, so something that we could do there. Not, not blocking the lake, of course, right, we want to see that, but keeping us away from the neighbors there.
Um, that sounds pretty interesting.
It, it, it does, we had talked a little about, about fencing, um, mostly considering, um, people potentially wandering. Um, we, we talked about things being well marked if there were a, a trail back in the woods. Um, I would suggest maybe if they were going to do a fence, they would let it be at the option of the neighboring property owner. Um, cause some people might rather see woods than a big fence, um, let them choose whether to do it there. We also, um, did not want to specify a fence, we were thinking again, if there were going to be trails in that buffer area, um, just not wanting to force any more tree cutting there, which is why we didn't propose that from the beginning, wanting as much tree as, tree cover as possible. But certainly if the neighbors would prefer fence and the applicant is okay with putting them up, I think it's a great idea.
Um, I think it, cause it sounds good, I think we need to see something on that. I actually do, a, a specific proposal on that.
Can I make a comment on that?
Yes, please.
So Justin invited everyone on the planning commission and the council to visit the property and so I have been to the property. Ironically, there was gunfire when I was out there on the property, it was not Justin shooting. But the woods are so deep that we couldn't actually even walk to the edge of the property in the buffer to see the neighbor's property. Um, so regarding fencing, I understand on the front end where there are residents on the front side for privacy and maintaining that. Um, but back here on the, on the rear side of the property, um, you cannot see nor even cut through the vegetation buffer.
Appreciate it, um, I think you were suggesting it was not just, uh, well, just a second, I think you were suggesting it was, it wasn't just for visuals, it was also for noise.
Just like she mentioned.
Just like she mentioned, just a, along the neighbor's property, right, cause Justin's property is, again, twenty something acres and it extends back, that's a long line of fencing, so just where some of the neighbors, where we can kind of block some of their, uh, anything to do to, to decrease the noise if we can.
I appreciate the clarification, but again, um, it was not what I originally, it's, it's fine, it, it was not what I originally heard, so I think I was proposing fencing the entire property or, but, um, I, I think we would need to see what is actually proposed.
Okay.
In that regard.
And, and, and for, if it is for sound purposes, having it breaking up, you know, on one property and not the next would probably not be effective.
It may, it may not, but there may be some priority areas based on, based on the, the development, at this point, I'd like Katie to ask you what is being proposed for, in a related way, for the, how the ingress and egress is being adjusted by the conditions and, and what that buffering is proposed as right now.
Yes, so we have, uh, suggested to move the driveway from the western, uh, little portion of, of that, uh, parcel that kind of sticks down to Wilker, Wilkersonville Road to the eastern portion, uh, cause it's a little more wooded, a little more secluded, a little bit further away from, um, the adjoining, uh, neighbor.
Do you mind actually pointing it out on the, on the?
Absolutely.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
I will do my best to man of light this.
So. This is currently where the, uh, current driveway is located, uh, off Wilkersonville Road, right into the property. Uh, we are set to move it to this.
Portion of the property, thank you, uh, we are suggesting to move it to this little tendril right here to kind of move it away from her house and to give a little more, there's, it's a little more wooded over here, so it'll act as more of a natural sound barrier. Uh, if cars were to travel up and down that road, uh, or that driveway, it would be a little more buffered. So instead of here, we're just, uh, suggesting to move it here.
And there's an opportunity on the existing entrance for emergency via, it'll be restricted to emergencies.
That is correct.
Is that correct under your proposal?
Yes.
Now, the vegetated buffer that you're proposing on the main ingress, i- that's to the east of the, uh, property that's sandwiched between the, uh, the two areas, two entrance areas, uh, could you describe the, the, the vegetated buffer that you guys are proposing?
Yes, so it will be at least fifty feet on either side of the driveway, uh, at least a fifty foot buffer on either side, so it gives a little bit of wiggle room, so it'll be fifty, fifty feet of undisturbed vegetative buffer. And it will ex- extend the full length of this piece of the property, which is about four, a little over four hundred feet, if I'm not mistaken. It'll go beyond, uh, Mr. Lawrence's property in the back.
When I looked at the condition, I had a question about what the height and density was and what the purpose of it was and I think you're thinking that it, uh, i- i- of specifying height and density that would be, uh, of, of effective screen, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, of adjusting that condition with that in mind, so. Yeah. Um, and I, and I, with that kind of condition, it's requirement would be a requirement to maintain, thank you, ma'am, thank you. Uh, it would be a requirement to, uh, maintain it, correct?
Um, that's, that's correct, that's correct, right, the, um, right, the condition is not just a, an initial state condition, it's goes with the zoning, so it lives with the property and so if there's a requirement for a buffer, it, it, it lives on, um, even if plants die or tornado comes through or something.
Um, I also have a question about one of the other suggestions that you made, which sounded very interesting, which was, and I don't want to mischaracterize it, but it was a, a twelve month usage contingency or something like that?
Yeah, so I, I had went to a, a meeting up in Cobb County and someone was granted that same, that same thing, they were looking for a special land use and conditionally, they didn't know how to use would turn out, so they, they, they offered them a twelve month contingency, like you just mentioned. Uh, after twelve months, it would be reevaluated to see if they did exactly what they said they were going to do. Um, it, it just kind of guards, guards the, the city and the county, so.
That, that's kind of what I thought I heard, thank you, um, and there is a provision that is relatively unique to special use permits that allows the city council to set a time limit on special use permits. So there would be a mechanism from a regulatory standpoint for there to be a time limit on the special use permit. I think that would deserve some consideration.
Right, um, so there's a little bit of difference, um, between the two, not to say we couldn't write it in, in, in the correct way, this, um, what you're referring to is a, uh, would be a reference to an actual expiration where it would have to be applied for, again, that's a little different than a kind of check-in where do we need more conditions or is he living up to, right, is it, is it just has he checked all the boxes he said he's going to check or are we, or are we talking about a whole reapplication? Um, we just need to know what, what the intent is.
And to be clear, the provision we're talking about is in section three dash sixteen B of the code and it says, the city council may specify limits on the duration of each special use permit, so I think that that is broad enough language that you could fit this concept within it, but I agree, there are details are needed and so I think there needs to be some consideration about that. Um, I think it's an excellent idea and I think it's, uh, something that the community would be appreciated because plans go awry, right? Uh, it's kind of human nature and so, uh, as the good intentions are good intentions, but it, things may work out differently, so I think that, that is a, that is an interesting concept, um. I'm not going to summarize my thoughts at this point, but would you like to?
Yeah, I have, I have two more things once Mike's done writing. So one, Mike, with parking, if a, if a traffic study is requested, would that include noting how many parking spots need to be on property to accommodate the maximum capacity vendors, I mean, um, yes.
The, the parking is not usually directly addressed, but there are, um, standard traffic generation numbers that could, you could just use the same numbers, uh, the standard, the same standard numbers to apply to a number of parking spaces, uh, certainly.
So is there a way to where that the site has adequate parking, um, for the venue so that they don't end up, you know, outside?
Right.
I mean, the property is large enough.
Right. So, um, yeah, there are a couple of different, a couple, a couple of different, maybe potential processes to, to drive that number, um. Uh, so if, yeah, if, if one of the countries is going to be a traffic study needs to be done, then we can say we can pull those numbers from the traffic study to generate parking requirements and in- insisted enough parking, um, uh, for that. Although. So there, there are a, 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 a couple of problems, one, the, the parking, or sorry, traffic generation numbers are, are normally they're normally day, average daily, average daily trips.
So not really for that.
Right, because these are peak, right, these are going to come in peaks, um, and so I don't know that it would necessarily give you what you need, although average daily numbers for, if you're looking at event space or something like that, it might be designed to handle the peaks, I'd have to. Right. Yeah. Right, right, so, right, I mean, you have the two, right.
Still need a place to park them.
Absolutely.
A couple.
Yeah.
Distinct markets, right, you have your overnight guests, then you have your event, um, uh, the wedding event, event guests. Um, there are standard, um, parking numbers out there, um, they have, how should I say, probably not among engineers, among planners, they've fallen out of favor, um, most of them are not based on, um, really good empirical evidence and they're designed for, um, they, usually they require too much parking. Um, um, so I don't know that using those standard numbers, um, is the best approach, we can certainly spend some more time with that and, um, and, and come up with a recommended, recommended method to, uh.
I would just like to make sure that there's adequate parking that meets the, your requirements on surface level um, to house the cars that are visiting. And then I have other, one other thing after you're done writing that one down.
Right, so we'll just need to define the proper method for determining that. Yep. Alright.
Um, the other one was, I was wondering about a condition that requires, um, which this can pass on to the wedding client, but that there be um, security, private hired security at each wedding event. Um, I photographed weddings for twenty years, so I've seen some wild things. Um, always loved when there was a, an off-duty officer on site and to watch alcohol consumption and stuff, so I was wondering if that's something that could be added.
It's something.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah, yeah, great. Do you want to, do you want it to definitely be off-duty police, do you want it to be sworn officers or any kind of private security, okay?
There was a, the, the hours of operation, um, what I think I heard was a little different than what I'm seeing in the conditions, I think what I heard was weekdays, six to ten P M. And then on Saturdays and Sundays, twelve to six P M.
Yes, sir, so that number that I spoke to Darby about is typically what I'm serving, you know, I have two dining times, six o'clock and eight thirty, when I do my three course and five course dinners, which are during the week, right, uh, weekends, uh, same dinner time, but in the case that there is an event, um, that's why I did the noon to, uh, ten. Um, so that's where those numbers came from, now people will be, uh, sleeping at the country inn, so that operation is separate from what I'm speaking on, I'm talking about.
Th- this is the events, these are the weddings and the events only.
Okay.
I'm talking, but certainly not the, the cottages, but I think I heard something, I wrote it down incorrectly, weekdays was six to ten P M.
Yes, sir.
And then what on Saturdays and Sundays?
I would say people have weddings at the earliest at noon that I personally cater, so noon.
Till when, I think it's the till when, ten P M.
Yes, sir.
Um, that, that's different than what we have, isn't it?
Right, uh, the, the condition as written says nine AM to ten P M. Uh, it only, only refers to wedding events, says nine AM to ten P M, um, Thursday, Fridays, Saturday and Sunday.
So I think that this is, uh.
We can tighten it up.
Yeah, this is different and it would be appropriate.
If I had a time to ten P M.
Yeah, perfect, and for clarification, just so I'm on the same page with you too, Mr. Doug, uh, the difference between that noon and nine AM is the start time of the event, so there wouldn't be an issue if there's a nine AM setup for a noon wedding event, correct?
I think that's understood, I think we're talking about the actually.
Great, yes, sir.
Times for, you know, you don't want trucks rolling in at six AM to set up.
Well, that's a good, that's a good point. Um, I think we ought to hear something about that, it's, and this may not be, maybe not enough time. Um, thank you, uh, well, I, I'm gonna, let me give my, I'll, I'll speak to my thoughts about this, if that's alright. Um, uh, yeah, first of all, I think you've come back with a better plan than what you had last year. I, I'm not convinced that this is country inn with, with a per- accessory uses or you just have multiple uses. I think you may have multiple uses on the same property, but, um, I understand where you're coming from, I, I'm not sure substantively what the difference is going to be. Um, but, uh, uh, the charac- classification, there were some comments about this, it really does seem like you've got two separate uses here, but I think your charac- the characterization, I'm calling it yours because you have now adopted it for your, uh, for your, um, um, recommendation. Um, i- i- I think it's workable, but I, it does raise a question in my mind about whether it's should be multiple uses, which is allowed, which is allowed. Um, nonetheless, uh, that, that's just a question, but I do think you've come back with a, with a better plan, I think that the adjustment of the locations looks right to me, the septic field location I think is right or looks right, but, um, i- i- it, I guess a lot of it depends on where the drain field is and such, so tho- those are the details that I don't think we typically get into here, but, but, when you did your, your, uh, percolation test, that wasn't in that area, was it?
No, we gotta adjust because we didn't know how, that's yet to be determined, right, we tested it in an area that was closer to.
Where the residents, where the private residents is going to be, that's what it looked like to me, so, so the percolation test is something that, well, we don't re- normally deal with, that's normally health department, right, so.
And you can't get a p- permit without it anyway, correct?
Right, so, I, I just a clarification. Right, so I I just a clarification point. I think the added provisions, the conditions. Are much more protective. And are better and more expansive than what they were a year ago. And they make sense to me. I think that there are some clarifications, some modifications, and I think with what we've just been talking about, there are some new ones. And I'm a little hesitant about trying to draft those tonight. I think they probably need some more study. The ones I'm looking at are traffic study, priority fence, whatever that is, the priority fencing. This twelve month. Conditional. Duration.
Would that be twelve months of operation after they're good, right?
I I think that that's correct, and and drafting that pursuant to the. Authority of the city council to. Time to put time limit durations on on special use permits. I think the parking clarification is probably needed, and I'm not sure timing for all this, but I do think it takes a little bit of thought and study on these things. I don't think we have to expressly say no concerts because this limits what is allowed, right? Except for the fact that. Based on what you were saying, we probably need to go beyond that. Other based on the fact that the applicant is.
Right, if you don't want the city, he says he's not going to apply for them, it sounds like. But if you don't want the city to approve. A special event permit that might include a concert element, we should write.
Well, I think that's right. I think that's right. I know the community wants it, and I don't think it it fits with the plan. With this culinary experience plan. I again, there there are some. I didn't hear that. I think. I think the use of the word event is probably important, but we can. I I think that that's not critical for this meeting right now. So. Change happens. I I appreciate your comment, Chandra, on that. I am, and it can be painful, and there's no question that it causes legitimate concerns. It is quite clear under the code that we work under and we are bound by the code. It it is quite clear that in the rural district. This kind of use, special use permit is allowed under the code. Now, that doesn't mean they all get approved, automatically approved, but it's definitely allowed, and it's definitely one of the uses that can happen. And so I I think what we are. And and I think it's probably true that the that much of this. Is consistent with what the code. Requires, as you have observed and as you have recommended it by staff. However, I do think that the that there is these additional conditions are important. I think they make sense. And I think we should see them. I think we should see them before we. So my suggestion. Is that we continue this hearing until a later date and. And see the additional conditions as they're actually going to be written. That would be my. That would be my suggestion, Christine. And we can either do it that by leaving this hearing open like we did. Or we can continue the meeting or continue it to a new that I would think that we just leave the hearing open. Would be my suggestion. But you guys, or Dana, do you have any thoughts on that? Nope. Christine? We we can either. We can either end this and reschedule a new one or simply leave this open until our next till our next meeting.
Right.
And I I think it's probably makes more sense to leave it open for.
So is that until the until the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting? Okay.
It is in March, April.
Sorry. Yes, March fifth.
March fifth.
That's that's that's.
Right.
I would have.
So nine days later, March four, March fourteenth.
March fourteenth, yes.
I think we'd be open to rest to scheduling a new. Another earlier meeting if we can. If that's, I think we probably would have time. It's a continuation, but I still think we had decided last time we want to public notice it as well.
Right, yeah, I'll need to check if a continued hearing. I think we have to readvertise, in which case we will need twenty days or so ahead.
So we would have to make a decision pretty quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
I I'm sorry you're having to watch the sausage getting made here. I apologize for that, but. My food there is usually, but not yours, I think, so. But I think that would make sense because I think these are things we need, but also it's this will take a little bit of time, so. Mike and Katie, do you have a preference from your from your standpoint about?
If if we're not going to make it happen before the March fifth city council meeting, I don't think the date otherwise matters. I think the regularly scheduled meeting day would be.
Does that make sense to you? All right, so I'm going to make a motion that we. Continue this hearing until the next regularly scheduled meeting of the. Of the planning commission. Unless otherwise directed by the city council. Which they can do. At any point they want to. Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor? The motion carries. So this will be continued until the next. Regularly scheduled meeting for purposes of providing these additional conditions. And information as we have discussed today. Do you need anything further on that? Or we can confer afterwards.
I don't think so. I'm I'm puzzling over. How to characterize it for the city council, because it's on their agenda for a public hearing. No recommendation from planning commission. True, if we have. Amended conditions, whatever whatever state they're in, if we have some of this language together, we'll probably go ahead and include that 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 language. For the city council meeting. I think that agenda has to. We have to. I think those packets have to be put together at the end of next week, so.
I think from the planning commission standpoint, we would like to see those and review those before making a recommendation to the city council.
Right, right, right. So they wouldn't have a recommendation from you to think about what to include in their packet. I don't think if we're moving on these conditions. If we have language to present them, I think I would like to provide them the latest version of that language.
City council can make whatever decision it wants, but our recommendation is we're going to continue this until we have a chance to see the additional conditions. And of course, the city council can do what it will on that, but I do think. And. I anyway, that's that's I think what our recommendation is. Yes, sir.
So is that? Is this really a deferral until we come back to see you guys?
Well, it's it's a continuation. The the public hearing is going to remain open, so. Well, I don't think we could in that amount of time. So I think that condition is going to be to do a traffic study. But if you can do it, I mean, I think there's a little a little question about the scope of what you're doing. And where I think you would probably want to confer with Mike and Katie about that, but it's I suppose it's not impossible. You couldn't do it.
So depending on the what you're looking for from the study, they might be able to come up with the the contribution, right? Trip generation. For the project, it would be doing actual traffic counts would be maybe a challenge between now and then, but if you can work off the old account, if you're willing to let them work off the old counts.
All right, it's not my it's not my decision, so. I think we're going to. It is.
March fourteen.
March fourteen. Okay, so so let's end that discussion at this point. I'm going to end. We've already ended the public hearing, so is there any old business for us to discuss?
No.
Any new business other than the fact that your new kid needs milk? Other staff reports?
Just have the building permit activity. I probably should have just emailed it. I've been presenting it at meetings. You can see. This is presented to planning commission. Those are just the January building permit numbers.
That was at the city council.
Yes, it was at the city council.
So we I think we've already heard this.
Okay, great.
All right, so. At this point, I think we're going to move to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? My second, all in favor? I I meetings adjourned.